Are we ready? It's March 12th. Welcome to the Eugene City Council Work Session. Welcome, everyone here and at home. The first item up are committee reports. And why don't we have, George, you want to talk about the McKenzie watershed council?
Yes, I'd love to, ma'am. Few meetings, the last two meetings, there wasn't a lot of discussion of grant, you know, if you're applying for grants for various things, but there are no major financial decisions made or anything. They were mostly informational meetings. Two months ago in February, Gordon Grant, geologist with the USDA Forest Service based out of Corvallis, gave a really great talk about the geology and hydrology of the McKenzie River Basin and kind of explained in layman's terms why we have such a great water source and why it's predicted to be very dependable even in spite of global warming trends. And he basically explained where the water comes from and what will happen in the future. And I'd just like to just mention, I mean, it's possible people are already familiar with this, but I think maybe for people watching, it might be interesting to hear. The Central Cascades is, he described it as the ultimate hydraulic sponge because of all the volcanic rock, and it's new volcanic rock, too. So that's key. And just think of the big lava field up in McKenzie Pass there. And that stretches, it's like hundreds of square miles. So what happens when the rain comes down, the rain and snow come down, and it sits on this top of the sponge, it gets absorbed. The rain doesn't run off, it goes, percolates down through the sponge into this vast underground reservoir in the Central Cascades. And then the snow melts, you know, it's pretty much gone at the end of the summer, and that also absorbs into the sponge. And they figure seven years later, the water emerges from the reservoir, the sponge. And the flows of the streams that flow out of that that go into the McKenzie are pretty steady year-round because of this sponge. In other words, they don't dry up in the summertime. And you think about it, go up to Olali Creek in the middle of the summer, it's flowing just like it was last winter. So global warming will have less snow melt, but the rainfall will be about the same. The sponge will absorb everything. The problem is going to be in California because with the, in the CR Nevada with eighty, you know, forty to eighty-foot snow packs every year. Global warming, that's not going to happen. That's going to go way down. And there's no, there's no absorption. It's a graniting granite mountain range. It runs off. And so there won't be this snow melt to gradually release the water like we used to. It'll all run off. And California does not have sufficient reservoir storage to hold that rapid runoff. So things could get really hairy in California. There's thirty-three million people and they need water for drinking and bathing and agriculture. And there's predicting really big time problems for California. Okay, on a more cheerful note, last Thursday's meeting, Brian Wolfher from Oregon State Wildlife, he's a biologist, he gave a really fascinating talk on cougars and bears. And I'll just do a re-run down there. The populations of both critters are increasing. When bears get a little bit too high, they do a pretty accurate count. They just increase the bear tags, there's a hunting season on them, and so they keep them down to an acceptable level that way. There haven't been any, there have been three confirmed bear attacks in the last five years in the whole state of work. So it's pretty rare. But he said something, and I think I'll just repeat it for everybody, is what to do if you see a bear? What happens when you run into a bear? You don't stare them in the eyes. They don't like that. You look, you look at them, you wonder where they are, but you don't look them in the eye. You back away and make sure they haven't exited. They don't want to be trapped anywhere. That would make them frantic, especially if there's cubs around. It's a sow with cubs. And you back away, and you do it that way. Also, if you live in a rural area and you're having a bear problem visiting your house, it's because you left food out somewhere in every single case. And if they get a good meal from your trash can or your back porch or your dog's bowl, they will come back for years to your house, even if you leave nothing out again. So be very careful about food management. That's a good way to keep bears away if you live outside of town. The cougar population's increasing. There's been lots of recent cougar sightings just right outside of town, especially out by Firdin Ridge. They seem to be increasing their range up north, now their old historic range up north to the coast range towards Portland. There have been zero confirmed cougar attacks in the whole state. Zero confirmed. Okay, you run into a cougar, it's a little bit different. It's the exact opposite. You look them in the eye, you make yourself look bigger, you yell at them, you reach for a stick, and you head right for them. They don't know what to do with us because we walk on two legs and we have very short necks. We don't walk on four legs and have a nice long neck to attack. So you seem counterintuitive, you know, you just want to turn around and run. Don't, don't do that. Act aggressively. So that's about it from that. Then finally, the presentation was given by Danielle Hummel, who's an AmeriCorps volunteer. And she's working out of Food for Lain County, has been helping with this effort. The Oregon Food Bank has held this, these feast events, they call them feast, food, education, agriculture solutions together. And they're going out to the rural areas in Oregon, all over the whole state. And here in Lain County so far, the Exeter Lawrence and Oak Ridge. And the last one's going to be up in, let's see, Vida in April. And what they do is they're trying to assess the local food systems, how people have access to food. You know, we talk about food deserts here in town. It's sometimes even worse out in rural areas. So they're trying to find out how people are getting their food, where are they getting it? The idea is to develop a more dependable food supply for the rural communities. And the last meeting will be in Vida at the McKenzie Vitals Daddy Sunday on April 21st from ten to four.
Thanks, George. That was all very informative. Now I know what to do when I see a bear and when I see a cougar.
Well, I thought I'd repeat that just because...
I'm not joking, I think it is interesting.
No, I mean, it's useful information. I would probably done just the opposite.
Don't do that, but it's good information. George Polling, you got anything you want to add?
No, I'll pass.
Okay. How about, I'll go up here to Pat.
Just briefly, the mayor and the city manager have been involved also with me in the Food for Lain County's downtown dining room, asked for us. And we received a final report from them today. Good news about the dining room, it's staying open. I think you'll hear more details from Food for Lain County in the upcoming days. But they had particularly kind words for the manager for being there and hanging out for the whole thing, so it worked.
Great. Andrea?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, George, for that.
It was interesting, wasn't it?
It was definitely interesting, kind of stuff you don't hear about every day. So my assignment, committee assignment is the police commission, which I did not attend, Mayor, the email got lost in the thirty to fifty emails we get...
I don't know, she wants me to absolve her of...
No, 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 I just wanted to, you know, because when I'm put on the committee, I kind of feel obligated to make sure that I'm there. I did want to share a couple of things about, about things that I am involved in. June 2nd is, hold me out here, is, we are Bethel at Peterson Barn, so I hope to see you all there.
June 2nd?
June 2nd, so save the date for that. I also went to the Bethel Health Center where I got to visit their health center over there at Cascade, and it's for students of Bethel School District, and it's very nice. If you have a chance to go there, they're looking always for opportunities to work with the community. And I did have one other thing, Mayor, but it's left my mind.
All right. Chris, how about you?
Other than the Housing Policy Board has met a couple of times to continue on talking about how to make that process more streamlined. And Elkhog Executive Committee met, and as you can imagine, talked about due structures and what we might do around that, not just for Eugene, but with regard to all the different communities. So there's, that's an ongoing conversation.
Okay. Thank you for that. Alan?
The only thing I'll say is Sustainability Commission will be meeting on the 21st here, on Wednesday, at 5:30.
Mayor, there is something I'd like to mention is the group that did the food distribution in the Harlow neighborhooded area, it's called Harlow Serves, is doing that again for the spring break. And the, instead of doing a situation where you put food out on your front porch, this time they're asking that it be dropped, any food donations be dropped off to Bertha Holt Elementary or Papa's Pizza on Colbert Road. And you can get the information in reference to that food drive at www.harloserves.com. So, you know, we did it at Christmas time during their winter break, and it was a very huge success, and I anticipate it being another success again. But the deadline for dropping off food donations is March 19th. And on that website, you'll, you'll find what types of food that they're looking for. And then the other thing is the Traveling County Board meeting, I missed last month because we had a joint elected officials meeting, and they moved this month's meeting to Wednesday because they're going to be attending the Board of Commissioners meeting for the discussion on transit room tax, or is it the annual report? One of the two, I can't remember. And then I had an LTD meeting this week, this past week that was canceled.
Thank you, George. Alan?
Oh, there was one thing that I forgot to mention that I did, actually, Chris and I went to the Birth of Three fundraising dinner this, last Friday. It was Alice in Wonderland kind of theme, which is pretty fun. And they did a great job, and they raised a lot of money for a really good program at Valley River, rather, Valley River Inn, with lots of community support and lots of community folks donating their services and things to the auction, both silent auction and the, and the bid auction.
Great. And Andrew, you have something else?
Yes, Mayor. I just wanted to talk to the, to make a comment to the community members that live on North Seneca. I've had a lot of conversation about how the road looks, and I want you to know that I follow, I have followed up with the city manager, and I will be getting an answer about that hopefully in the near future. There is no public meeting or public forum associated with this road. I've gotten some phone calls from constituents saying, thinking that there was. You're always welcome to come and testify on Monday nights. And we, the local candidates in that part of town, the northwest part of Eugene, will be at the ABC meeting on March 28th. You're welcome to come and visit with us then.
Okay, great. So before I go, the city manager, I just share a few things with you. Fun thing, yesterday, you know, there's a sort of a collaboration between University of Oregon and the Eugene Opera, Nixon and China Opera, that's going to be this weekend. And yesterday I went to hear Ambassador Platt, who was on part of the delegation that went with Nixon to China, and he showed his home pictures, movies of that event. It was really fascinating. He's, he's really good at, at his presentation, too. It was just, it was just really, really interesting, excellent thing. So it's terrific thing for us to have that, those kind of things here in our community. And I hope some of you will get to go to the opera, too. I think it's going to be really interesting and fun. On the good news today, we'll take what we get. So I understand unemployment is down and riding the railroads is up. And this week, ORI does its groundbreaking, Oregon Research Institute, and in at Fifth cuts its ribbon. So, so all of these things are things that are really good things that are happening. And I would say the unemployment picture is still not bright, but it's getting better, and we all have to hope it keeps moving in that direction. I went to the OMPAC meeting, which for those of you who don't know what OMPAC is, it's the Oregon Metropolitan Planning Organization Consortium, right? Yep. And so all the MPOs of the state get together to talk about what's happening in their area. And the things I can share with you about that is, besides taking a tour around Corvallis, which is what we did, they, as you may have heard, with their bus system, stopped charging people but added a fee to their utility bill. And they indexed it according to the price of fuel. And they have had their ridership go up thirty percent. And so they feel like this is a really good thing because it actually, they got more and more people riding transit, and they've also got shared funding for the system that's broadly throughout the whole system. So just kind of an interesting thing for...
Where is that, Mayor?
Corvallis. So something for us to think about. And then Portland talked about the, you've heard a lot about these greenhouse gas scenarios with this. I'll pass this around, and this is their, the work that they've been doing on Climate Smart Community Scenario Project. And that's, they have to do the whole thing and implement it. We have to just do the scenario planning, and then we will decide after that if, what we're going to do with it. So that's interesting for you. And then the other thing that I thought was interesting that we may want to pay some attention to is Portland has really developed a good economic development plan, and the new piece of it is an export plan. And they're really sort of delving deeply into their economic development. And we could maybe learn some things from them. And the last thing I will mention is the highway mobility standards were presented, and I know we've heard about them over time, but they are really, Oregon Department of Transportation is really trying to loosen up the mobility standards to make it easier for us to deal with our congestion issues and our planning and all of that. So that was all really interesting, and that's all I'm going to share today. City manager?
I don't have anything tonight, Mayor. Thanks.
All right. Well, thank you, everybody. So now we'll go on to the second item on our agenda, which is our federal priorities list, getting ready for our annual trip to DC.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, for the record. Brenda Wilson, Intergovernmental Relations Manager. Normally, at the beginning of the year, or at the end of the year, historically, we have brought to you recommendations for earmark requests for our federal congressional delegation. As you know, earmarks are on hold, and we are entering another appropriation cycle on the federal level where earmarks are still on hold. But the reason that the United Front's been so successful, and the reason it was formed, is because we came together as a region, partners have come and gone, but we set our priorities for earmark requests on a regional level that helps us help our congressional delegation pick the top earmark request that they would submit to the appropriations committees. It helped them help us by not making them have to choose between a project in Springfield, a project in Lain County, a project at the University School District, and so on. With earmarks being on hold, it makes it a little bit more challenging, but we wanted to stay ahead of the curve. We wanted our congressional delegation, the administration, and the federal agencies to know that we're still here, we still have needs, and we still have priorities. And so last year, as you know, we changed the way that we prioritized our federal agenda and what we included on it. We focused on policy issues and reauthorizations. Last year, we were on the seventh continuing resolution for the FAA, and just recently, they passed that. And transportation reauthorization is also overdue. And we also have policy issues that come up throughout the year. This year, we are recommending we do it a little bit differently because in previous years when we had earmarks, we were really stuck between the time that we had to submit our requests to our congressional delegation and the time they had to submit their requests to the appropriations committees. We don't have that timeline anymore. And so what we are recommending is a start of a federal agenda which will be flexible and fluid. We will add to it and remove from it throughout the year as things change. Things may come up in the middle of the year that we may find are important, we want to add those to the list. We may accomplish some things, and those things can be removed from the list. So we presented recommendations to the IGR Committee. And before you is the federal priorities list that the IGR Committee is recommending and proposing that you place on the Eugene federal priorities list. They include policy and programmatic priorities as well as federal fund priorities. The federal fund priorities are not earmark requests, there are no earmarks. But we want our congressional delegation to know that we still have needs in our city and our region, and we need their assistance in identifying any federal funds, whether they be agency, formula, grant funds, that may become available that would fit one of these priority projects. And so as you can see from the action, agenda item summary, we are continuing some priorities that are on our current list. And typically, we, once we put a priority on the list, it stays on until it's either satisfied or there's a reason to take it off. And we also have some new policies that have come up that the city feels is important. And again, the federal fund priorities are not earmarks, they are projects that are important to our city and to, for our congressional delegation to help us identify any available federal funds that might come up. These are the recommendations that have been brought to you from the IGR Committee. I was just informed today by Councilor Zelenka that the city council recently adopted Resolution 5055, which requests amendment to the US Constitution declaring that corporations do not possess the constitutional rights that national persons do in response to the Citizens United. One of the resolutions is that the city include this on its 2012 federal legislative agenda. The city of Eugene actually would, will have two federal legislative agendas. We'll have a legislative agenda that is part of the United Front, and then we'll just have our own legislative agenda. I would recommend that we not propose to put this particular policy on the United Front federal agenda. The reason is that the city of Springfield cannot support it, and it's likely that Lain County cannot support it either. That doesn't mean that we don't advocate for it as part of the city's federal legislative agenda. And as a matter of fact, that should be easy to do because Senate Joint Resolution 29 has been cosponsored by both Senator Merkley and Wyden, and House Joint Resolution 72 has been cosponsored by Congressman DeFazio. So our congressional delegation is on board with this particular policy. It's just that as far as a united front policy, unlike earmarks, which are typically applied for individually with the money going to individuals, the policies are more global on the United Front agenda, and everyone needs to support the policies unlike the earmarks historically.
So all I would want to follow up on that with Brenda is I can understand that for the United Front, but I don't know how you, because we're expressing here our priorities. So I don't know if you want to add a sentence about this as a priority, but not as one of our United Front priorities, just as you just said. I just think we probably want to express that in some, in some fashion.
Mayor Piercy, as with any direction from the city council, the resolution states that it's part of our legislative lobbying agenda, and I certainly will take that on.
Okay, thank you. And I want to very quickly, I know we have limited time, but I also know people are listening and don't know what's on our list. So if you can just sort of quickly...
Absolutely.
Quickly run through this very quickly, a sentence each or something, that I think that would be helpful for people.
I have arranged them from the current priorities to new priorities. And so we have the Federal Transportation Reauthorization Bill, which is a big bill. And we do expect some monies to be associated with that bill, and we have a separate list of those earmark requests. Right now, it's expired, and it's continuing the, the, Congress is working on it right now. The Senate just passed their version of the bill. As I'm sure you've heard, it also includes a provision for secure rural schools. The House is taking that up, and we will continue to urge that some of the programs that were cut out of it with previous versions like transportation enhancements and safe routes to schools be put back in. So this is our request to our congressional delegation that they include things in the reauthorization that we find are important. Medicare reimbursement, it's a current policy as well. Right now, we are not being reimbursed for EMS services. This has been a federal priority of ours for quite some time. The Metro Waterways General Investigative Study, it's not really a request, it's more of an update to our congressional delegation that we've met with the US Army Corps of Engineers to push for the Metro Waterways GIS. We ran into a roadblock. Just in the last couple of months, we've developed a new timeline with the Army Corps of Engineers, and should we need assistance from our federal delegation, this provides them the background information. The Community Development Block Grant Program has been cut significantly, and our request there is to keep it at current funding levels or above. The same for the home program, to not cut it. The Internet Tax Freedom Act continuation, the cell tax moratorium, these are issues that have been part of our individual city federal agenda for quite some time. These interfere with city ordinances that we use to collect tax and could result in significant losses to our general fund, in some cases in excess of a million dollars, depending on the way that the bills are drafted. And we would ask that they oppose these bills. The Public Rights of Way compensation issue is before the FCC, and it would preempt a local government's from regulating their own rights of way. And so that is an issue for us as well, since we do ask for compensation for the use of our right of way. And the Community Access Preservation Act would basically allow capital funds to be used for operations because PEG channels, PEG public education, government channels are limited on funds. It would allow each PEG channel to make its own determination about where it should be using its money. So those are our policy and programmatic policies. The mayor had asked previously about whether or not the post office would be part of the counties, and we could include it on ours as well. Right now, the county won't be including that as part of their United Front request because the organization that is spearheading that is not really part of the county. And so we will work with them to include it on the, our, our city's federal priority list and do whatever we can for the post office.
And that's the old post office on Wollamette, not the Springfield Gateway?
It's the one that the, you know, I, I think we've talked about that, but the post office has taken the for sale sign, the postal service has taken the for sale sign down off the post office, and think that it being used for a museum is of a higher purpose for our community. So that, so there is that intentionality, how that becomes reality is a whole nother step, but...
Just the front part of it, not the...
Yes. And so we'll work on that. As far as the Springfield one, that was part of a federal effort that we were communicating with our federal delegation, but as you know, that they've decided to close that facility. So the federal fund priorities, Team Court Expansion, the Police Special Operations Facility, the Franklin Boulevard, the Justin Path, and the Eugene Depot are all projects that you approved to be placed on the United Front agenda last time. The only new project would be the Pedestrian and Bicycle Master Plan. It's my understanding that's a twenty-year plan, approximately sixty million dollars. Right now, the request in your packet is for two million dollars to start, to get that started. So we're asking our congressional delegation for assistance in identifying federal funds. I would suggest that when the next Federal Transportation Reauthorization Bill comes up for reauthorization, that we look at that again for a bigger request because that is a much bigger bucket of money. And so...
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Policies and the projects.
George, did you have any, or the chair, did you have anything you want to add?
No, I think she's covered it quite well.
Okay, great. Okay, questions?
I do have a question, Brenda. Did we, was any reason stated by Springfield and the county why they didn't want to support being a corporate person-led resolution? Or had they simply just not discussed it?
Mayor Piercy, Councilor Brown, they haven't had a chance to discuss it with their city council and their board, but staff has indicated that they didn't believe that, given past discussions, that they would be supportive of including this as our united, one of our United Front priorities.
Alan?
So thanks for including that in our legislative priorities for the federal government. The Police Special Operations Facility, what I understand about that is that that's a, that money is going towards an old building, nineteen forty-five vintage building to do seismic upgrade because it's a police facility, to get it up to essential services, seismic standards, plus energy retrofits. And that's the extent of the four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar ask is to do those kind of modifications?
Mayor Piercy, Councilor Zelenka, that's exactly right. Should we experience a seismic event, all of our special units, except for narcotics, is housed in there. It would, it could... It would, it could be quite a disaster since it is not seismically up to standards. And again, there are no earmarks. If there were, we would be asking for an earmark, but we, they are aware of this, that we need this funding, and they are assisting us in helping locate and identify any federal funding.
Right. It might have to be saved by the fire department. So the other one in here that's interesting to me is the Franklin Boulevard, Walnut Street to Alder Street. That's the NEPA part. Can you describe that a little bit?
Yes, that's part of our multi-way boulevard on Franklin, which is also one of our projects that's included as part of our transportation reauthorization package. This is just for the NEPA part. That money's very difficult to find, and so again, we're asking our congressional delegation for any assistance in identifying federal funds that will help us with that. That is a partnership between Eugene, Springfield, and LTD with Lane County as well.
And NEPA is the environmental work that you'd have to do in order to get federal funding?
Exactly, in order to qualify for any construction monies.
One final question. So since earmarks are taboo now, what's the process in the absence of earmarks? Is it just all through programmatic? Is that the way in through programs that are all through the administration as opposed to the congressional action?
Mayor Piercy, Councilor Zelenka, yes. Right now, they're struggling because if Congress doesn't allocate the funds, then the administration allocates the funds. And so they're struggling with not only going back to earmark appropriations, but what do you call them? And so right now, any federal funding that's available, and many programs have been cut, are either through formula or competitive grants through federal agencies. And I-
Yeah.
Exactly. And so there's the struggle. I do expect earmarks to come back. I do. They just won't come back this year. But we need to let our congressional delegation know that we're still here, we still have needs, that the United Front still is collaborating to determine what's best for our region, and when earmarks come back, we'll be ready.
Well, I guess despite the rhetoric, there actually weren't that much money. The year before, they cut them to only like $18 billion out of a $3 trillion budget. That's bling, zero, zero, I don't know how many zeros that is before you get to a one. Pretty modest amount in the first, but they gave away all their authority to do programmatic or do things like what we're asking for, which are all good projects.
Pat, you're next, and then Chris.
Thank you, Mayor. Brenda, this is a good list. I know that in the past, we've had very good success with the United Front approach. That's brought a lot of, a lot of needed services and actual money flowing into the community. I have a couple of questions about the list that we have. Most of them seem pretty evident that they are either requesting money or requesting continuation of programs. The, there's one, I have a question on the Internet Tax Freedom Act continuation.
Yes.
How does that, how does that bring or restore money to the community?
The, this is a, Mayor Piercy, Councilor Farr, this is quite a complicated issue. Was enacted in 1998 and renewed in 2001 and 2004, and puts a moratorium on internet tax. There was a grandfather clause in the bill, however. But with these telecom issues, as you know, we've been involved in several lawsuits. Either we're being sued by industry claiming that our ordinances are not enforceable against them, do not provide us with the authority we need to tax, or they are not paying the tax and claiming that we don't have the authority to collect it. We're under the grandfather clause right now, but basically, the bill preempts local taxing authority. If it's renewed and there's a continuation of this act, we could very well see a whole nother round of litigation claiming that we do not have the authority. So we are asking our congressional, well, let me rephrase that. We are asking Senator Merkley and Congressman DeFazio to oppose the continuation. The continuation is a bill that Senator Wyden is actually introduced.
Okay. Good, that explains. So that, sounds like that goes back to the Council Committee on Telecom, telecommunications that Councilor, then Councilman Nathanson and I sat on so many years ago.
Mayor Piercy, Councilor Farr, that's exactly right.
Thank you. So each one of these, and it does seem, has some direct effect on cash flow or programs, except for one, which isn't actually on this list, and that's Resolution 5055. I don't see it on the list. 5055, is that the correct one?
Yes.
It's not on the list that we're going to be voting on tonight. So then how does that become a priority if it's, if we're not, if it's not a part of the motion tonight?
Mayor Piercy, Councilor Farr, it doesn't become part of our United Front agenda, but it is part of the City of Eugene's federal legislative agenda that I will lobby on separately.
Okay, so the, the motion that we're voting on tonight, then, is the United Front approach. It's not 5055 that we're voting on tonight?
Correct.
That's clear. Thank you.
Hey, Chris.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out the Community Development Block Grant Program and the Home Fund Program. It's extremely important that we continue to advocate for those, not just for us, but for the entire United Front. Both of those programs are really a place where government interacts with the public. The home funds in particular, in Springfield, that's a fundamental program that's used to help low-income folks buy homes. I mean, it gives them down payments, it gives them ways to get into homes. In Eugene, we use it a lot for rental assistance and for helping people get into affordable housing. So if you really want to have an impact on people's livability, those are two very important programs, and they have been severely cut. And not only have the cuts affected the ability to provide service, but they affect us at the general fund level in terms of the ability to even operate those programs. So it's a double whammy, one for us and one for the public. So I'm glad to see him on here, and I'm glad to see that support for them continues to be strong.
And I would just point out that some of these priorities are shared priorities, but Springfield and Lane County and Springfield School District and Willamette Lane-
LTD.
LTD all have their own part of this that you're not seeing reflected on this, on this page tonight that we take on the United Front trip. Okay, I think we're, Alan, you want in another round?
So I have a process question. So the suggested motion actually says remove the, the recommended 2012 federal priorities list. It doesn't mention the United Front or not, it's just our federal priorities. So I, I suggest that we modify the motion and say that, move to recommend the federal priorities for Eugene and for the United Front, so that we're, and the difference being the one that we've already had.
Whether Eugene 2012 federal priorities list for United, the United Front federal priorities.
I can't vote on that without seeing it. I can't vote on that without seeing it.
Seeing what?
The Eugene, the one that's separate to the one that we're looking at right here.
It's exactly the same, except for the one that we already voted on, which is Resolution 5055, which you've seen.
It's exactly the same, except for that one item.
Mayor Piercy, Councilor Zelenka, it just as a clarification, that won't be the only item on the City of Eugene's federal priority list. As issues arise that you vote on and care about and provide direction to City Manager and me, I'll take those federal priorities up individually as the year goes by. And so there isn't a need to add that to any list. That list is just something that's ongoing. So if something pops up next week that you hear about, that you care about, and you want to take action on it and direct us to do something, we certainly will do that. But that wouldn't be the list. There's no official list.
No, I don't think there's anything wrong with changing the motions, they adopt the recommended United Front 2012 federal priorities list. That would be adequate for this, right?
Mayor Piercy, that, that's fine. We used to use the United Front, and then someone raised an issue that they didn't like the way that that sounded, so.
Well, it all depends on year to year. In this case, we-
We understand what that means, absolutely.
I think Pat feels he wouldn't be able to vote on it if it wasn't specific, so.
Do we have a list of federal issues that are, are priorities that we approve ever?
Mayor Piercy, Councilor Zelenka, no, because there isn't a certain time of the year where those arise. They arise throughout the year, and every time they arise, whether it's the Western Oregon Plan for timber, and as those come up and you vote on them and you take action and provide direction, we'll take those up as they-
Direction individually on each one.
Exactly, and so-
Unless the individual thing that we're voting on says, and add this to the federal priorities list, does it get put on our list?
It's on, Mayor Piercy, Councilor Zelenka, it's on my list of things to do.
Okay.
Okay.
Could you have me on that?
Yes.
You actually answered my main question, which was how do we vote on the city's priority list? And I think just the point is that this is the United Front, and this is what we as a United Front are presenting. And since the 5055 and others aren't necessarily on the United Front, then this is specific to what this particular lobby group is going back to present.
Mayor Piercy, Councilor, that's exactly right. The lobby group will go back next month. They will present a document that includes all of these priority and projects, whereas we throughout the year can at any time pick up a federal issue.
But you bring a good point. So this probably should say, adopt the recommended Eugene United Front 2012 federal priorities list, because that's what this is. So it's not the complete United Front list. You okay with that?
So has, has the motion been?
No, you need to put the motion out there. And I'm suggesting you put Eugene United Front 2012 federal priorities list as the language.
Oh, I see. Okay, I move to adopt the recommended Eugene United Front 2012 federal priorities.
Before I second that, as a clarification, that is what is listed here, and nothing beyond what is listed here. Second.
Okay. All right. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please indicate. There's one, two, three, four, five, six in favor, and none in opposition. It passes. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Brenda.
Thank you, Brenda. We'll move on into the work session on the Capstone Project. City Manager?
Thanks, Mayor. I'll turn over to Nan Lawrence. She will walk us through a short presentation.
I think I'm waiting for Beth to, okay, looks great. Good evening. I'm Nan Lawrence. I'm senior planner in the Community Development Division for the city, and thank you for this opportunity to have this conversation. Today, I'd like to present some information about the Capstone student housing proposal. Representatives from the Capstone development team are here. So we've got Conrad Sikk.
Welcome.
Thank you.
John Aiken, Steve Master, and Milton Euler. Great. So the presentation today is about providing an introduction and an overview of the project, starting with the context, including the policy format, the downtown area, the neighborhood, and the site. Then we'll provide information on the developer, the proposal, the public engagement opportunities, and we'll finish up with the council timeline. We have a number of documents that contain policies and goals that support increased density downtown, housing on the edges of downtown, reuse of existing vacant or underutilized land, preservation of existing neighborhoods. This project also has bearing on all seven pillars of Envision Eugene, which in fact assumes a significant density downtown, including student housing. And over on the wall over there, you'll notice under sustainable development, increased downtown development is one of the desired outcomes identified under the council goal of sustainable development. Here's some context for the project within the downtown plan area. As you know, we have a lot going on in our downtown. We haven't seen as much development along the southern edge of downtown where this project is located. In terms of neighborhoods and the neighborhood context, the project is within the Downtown Neighborhood Association boundaries, which extends one lot, oops, let me do that, one lot right there. This is 13th Avenue, and this is the one lot south of 13th Avenue. All of that is within the Downtown Neighborhood Association. You can see the Jefferson West Side to the Southwest, and the West University's neighborhood, West University Neighbors to the Southeast. The orange dots that are shown, I guess they're just kind of dark dots up there, that's just showing some existing multifamily projects in this surrounding area. I'm going to present a little bit of site information here. What we see is the downtown plan boundary with the zoning shown. The area shown in red, which is this whole area in here, that's all zoned C3. That includes the proposed site. And C3 is the major commercial zone in our downtown. The zone allows dense housing development, such as the one proposed. The existing site includes the Peace Health Clinic and optical shop. And I'm going to try to point these out. This is the Peace Health Clinic. This is their optical shop. It's also includes a private-owned building now under contract, which is this right here. And the rest of it, under the words Phase 1, that's all the existing parking. So the development site for Phase 1 does not include, for example, the Kennel Ellis Building, which is right here, or the Florence Apartments, or the little barber shop. Actually, it's Larry and Lauren's Barber Shop. So Phase 1 does not include those properties. Phase 2, on the west side of Olive, includes primarily surface parking, as you can see So in terms of the project site for Phase 1, which is the side, the site east of Olive, here's what it looks like. And you can see there's a bicyclist right here in front of the former Peace Health Clinic there on the left. On the right, I'm showing the alley that's actually going north-south from the site. And you can see this white building in the back is the Florence Apartments. Every time we went out to photograph the site, there were bikes going back and forth. So I think this is a pretty well-used bike path. For Phase 2, here's what the site looks like. These are existing parking lots. This is a bicyclist, you can see it's a little dark, crossing the, on the, they're crossing Olive to get onto the bike path, the 12th Avenue bike path that crosses over to the university area. So let's move to Capstone and the proposal. The Capstone Collegiate Communities has more than 20 years of experience building student housing. That is their market niche. They focus specifically on student housing. They develop, they manage, in some cases, they partner with universities to provide student housing opportunities on campus, in the downtown core, or right near. So I'm showing an example here of a project in Kennesaw, at Kennesaw State University near Atlanta. The proposed development includes two phases, as we've seen. Phase 1 is 217 units, 550 parking spaces with some ground floor retail. Phase 2 is 142 units, 430 parking spaces. We've heard from the community about the desire for robust management, and this is something that Capstone pledges to provide, including live-in managers, about seven people in total in this project. And as you know, the developer has requested an alley vacation. Their concept is to rededicate the alleys, a portion of the alleys as pedestrian bike paths. I'll show you an image in just a moment. And they've also requested a MPT. And the MPT, the multi-unit property tax exemption, includes both phases of the project. The analysis for the MPT and additional details will be forthcoming in a future work So we're looking specifically here at the project phases, just for clarification. Phase 1, shown in purple, and Phase 2. Phase 1 is about three and a quarter acres. Phase 2 is just about two acres, and as you can see, they're split by Olive Street. Here's the proposed elevation for the project. The parking is behind this elevation. It's not visible. I want to add that this image is conceptual only. I understand that they're still working on a number of details, including the final character and, and design for the building. And this building would be about five stories tall. I guess it would be five stories tall. It's hard to be about that height, but.
[laughing]
So let's move to the alley vacation. Currently, as you can see, the bike path and the 12th Avenue alley have a jog, and Capstone is proposing to straighten it out, as you can see in the image on the right. They would then dedicate this- They would then dedicate this alley for bikes and pedestrians only. And as I mentioned, this is a highly-used bike path. So I'm showing again another image down here with an individual riding his bike right through on that alley. This image shows the improved path. And actually, really, for clarification, I want to point out that this is the alley that would be straightened and then rededicated for bikes and peds. In addition, the north half of the north-south alley would also be used, vacated and then rededicated just for bikes and peds. So to make sure that there's adequate vehicular access, the southern portion of that alley and a new alley here would be dedicated so that vehicles can use that. There's fire access. It also provides access to the private properties, including the Florence Apartment, immediately to the south. I'm giving a little detail here. I want to point out what we've heard from the developer in terms of the type of student housing that they're proposing. So as I've mentioned, here are the student units, and the parking is embedded in the project, so it's not visible from the street. In addition, within the student housing development, here there's open space, here there's a potential of a pool or other open space-type amenities. There is captured social space or open space or green space within the units. In addition, the types of units that they're proposing are varied in size in terms of how many bedrooms are in each. Let's talk about the public engagement for this project. Yesterday, the city club, in collaboration with Downtown Neighborhood Association, sponsored a discussion. City staff were present, also representatives from LTD were there, and members of the development team, in addition to Jean Tate. That happened yesterday, and I think that is still available streaming on the city club website. Tomorrow, Jefferson West Side is sponsoring a question-and-answer session from 6:30 to 9:00. I think that's at the Vets Club. And the city is sponsoring an open house tomorrow at the atrium... I'm sorry, thank you. On Wednesday, the 14th, from 5:00 to 7:00, to give an opportunity for any member of the community to come. We'll have staff there. We'll have representatives from LTD, from the U of O, and from Capstone, so that any member of the community who's interested can come and either leave questions or find a person to answer questions at that time. And then on April 23rd, we're anticipating the public hearing on MPT and the public hearing on the proposed alley vacation. The council timeline, today the council work session, an additional council work session on April 9th, public hearings on MPT and the alley vacation on April 23rd, and then work sessions on April 25th and May 9th. Thank you. I'm available for questions, as is the Capstone Development Team.
Thanks very much. So I'll just start off with a few things here. Are you guys going to capture the notes from the various meetings so that we have some kind of accumulation of what is heard at those meetings? That would be, I think, really helpful. I want to say that in terms of the plan, as we've listened and had our sort of town-and-gown meetings and the things that Alan in particular has been involved, and there's always been a desire for more open social space on the property as opposed to having it spill out into the streets. So I'd like seeing that. I wanted to hope that we look carefully. I'm appreciating the bike and ped plans here, and I'm hoping that we'll look at this for any other sort of bike-ped-related things that we may want to encourage as part of this. It's our moment to be doing that. I wanted to just... I've talked to the city manager about this, and I'll probably keep on till... But I want... Got you guys in the room, so I'll just talk right on back there. And say that I hope that you will take the steps to just go over to Olive Plaza and meet with those folks. They're very fearful, and I think some kind of direct opportunity with that, the residents there could really be helpful to allaying their concerns. So I can't do that, Steve, but I just... You can talk to me afterwards or whatever, but... Let me see if there was anything else. No, that's pretty... Oh, there's two more things. One is I noticed in some other projects, there were non-student residents in other places, and I don't know whether... Nan, I don't know how you want to handle this, but I don't know if there's any plans for any non-students in this project or not. Are we just opening a... Can we ask them?
Not in their heads, yes. And I heard that as well.
Okay. And let's see. Oh, there's also, I think I may have mentioned it, but I want to mention it, is there are two agencies that work with disabilities across from the site where you're billing, and they have a lot of interest in working with the students, maybe employing some of them. They have a lot of interest in whether there's any way for them to have some of their folks sighted there. So I'm just putting that out as part of what they're interested in as well. So that, to me, is part of that thinking about how we build a community benefit into the project. So anyway. Pat, you're next.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, there are tons and tons of questions that are going to come up, digging deep into the minutia of how this project is going to be built. And I have questions myself, but I expect and believe that the questions will be answered as we go along. So I'm not going to dig deep into questions right now. I'm just going to point to our growth management policies on the wall and see how this particular project addresses this city's growth management policies. And I'm looking at numbers 1 through 10. And with the exception of number 5, as we go down 1 through 10, it hits them all right on the head, with a couple that I do have questions about. Number 6, the character and livability of individual neighborhoods. Can somebody tell me how we're addressing growth management policy number 6? I know we have the Jefferson West Side Neighbors Forum coming up, and we have the Downtown Neighbors Association that we just had. How's the input going to be used on that?
It sounds to me that there are two questions. Let me make sure I'm hearing. One is, how does this maintain the character and livability of existing neighborhoods? But also, were you also asking about how it maintains character and livability in downtown? So...
Number 6 specifically on this one.
Okay. All right. So...
Individual neighborhoods.
Our understanding is by placing student housing in this location relative to those policies, that we may be lessening the pressure for development in other established residential neighborhoods. So I'm... We have not done a full policy review, but based on our initial review, that's what we're seeing.
Excellent. The other one that raises a question is policy number 9. Once again, it's talking about neighborhoods, and it's historic preservation and neighborhood planning programs. Talk about that just a moment. How are we addressing historic preservation and neighborhood planning programs?
There are two buildings very near to this site, the Kennel Ellis Building and the Florence Apartments, that are of a significant historic character, to the extent that they warrant attention. The Kennel Ellis Building is actually on the National Register. The Florence Apartments is not. However, in the developers' plans, so far that we've seen, they've made an attempt to provide additional access to the Florence Apartments. The Kennel Ellis, since it's not immediately adjacent to the site, it has less impact than the Florence Apartments. But it's an effort to provide access to the Florence Apartments in a better way than they have at present.
Okay. Good. You've answered my questions basically on 6 and 9. As we go through the rest of those, 1 through 10, with the exception of 5, which talks more about our area partners, it seems to me that you're checking those off just one at a time. The other one comes up is number 14, policy 14, where we talk about offering incentives that support higher density, infill, mixed use, and redevelopment. It seems to me we're checking off number 14 also on this one, providing incentives. So my analysis on this is that if we are going to stand by our growth management policies, and we're looking at this particular project, and the work that's been done to look specifically at 1 through 10, with the exception of 5 and number 14, it seems to me that this is precisely what we've been looking for, what we've been asking for for many, many, many years, as long as I've been on the council for the downtown area. That's not just going to provide the housing that we've always asked for, that we've always desired downtown, but it's also going to promote other sorts of economic development downtown, clearly, with that many students who all have, you know, needs and they're going to shop in stores and eat in restaurants and do all the things that we want people to be doing downtown, not just 8:00 in the morning till 6:00 in the evening, Monday through Friday, but seven days a week, from dawn till... Well, it's not dawn till dusk. It's however late students stay up, I guess, and however late people stay up, so...
10 o'clock till.
Studying right up to there.
So as I go through the checklist on this, I mean, it seems to me that the homework's been done, but checked off. While there are questions that are going to come up, a plethora of questions are going to come up, it seems to me that the growth management policies are addressed by this project. So thank you very much.
Chris, you're next.
Thank you. I really appreciate the work that's being done and the thoughtfulness that's going into it. And at the same time, I'm very aware that fear is a very powerful and legitimate feeling that people have. And whether that fear is based on reality or whether it's based on perception, it's still what people feel. And I think, as has already been said, we really have to recognize and accommodate the fact that we're dealing with a significant amount of fear. And I think that does have to be addressed, and it needs to be addressed head-on. And I think it needs to be addressed with as much reality, but also thoughtfulness to the fact that this is not an... You know, fear is not an unreasonable thing. I'm drawing parallels to the conversations we just had not that long ago about multifamily housing development in North Eugene and the kind of fear that that generated. And people can go to places when they're afraid that all low-income people are drug-addicted criminals, same as all college students are drunken, you know, partiers. That's where fear takes you. And I'm not saying that's not a legitimate feeling to have, but it does have to be addressed, and we do have to be able to approach it. Just as much as we have to deal with the physical and logistical realities, I think we should do that. And so the outreach that the mayor talks about, I think, is a significant portion of how you deal with that component of this as well. With that said, just as I did on the housing project, we are evolving, and we need to decide how can we evolve in a way that accommodates what this community is. We are turning into a different kind of community, gradually, but in some ways painfully. We do have growth management policies, and they do deal with the fact that we are looking to be more dense. And that's not just talk. That means we have to really actually do it. But we need to do it in a way that's sensitive to the manner in which it's done. And that's really, probably, all I'm trying to say is, I think there is not a discrepancy in reality here. I think it's simply something that we have to demonstrate is possible to do. And I think the developers have a track record, which hopefully can demonstrate that there has been this kind of accommodation made, there has been this kind of thoughtfulness put into it. This isn't the first time they've been to the party. And so I think if they have done this before and they've been able to demonstrate that, I think that goes a long way towards making the points that need to be made. So that's really what I'm saying is, as we deal with this on a realistic logistical and operational level, we also have to deal with it in terms of its impact on an evolving community. And I think that's absolutely doable. But I appreciate the effort going into it.
Andrea?
Thank you, Mary, Mayor. And thanks, Pat and Chris. You guys both had a lot of good things to say, so I won't repeat them. But I... What I'm just kind of curious about is the council timeline, Nan. Is this going to work for the developers? I understand that this is kind of a concern about timing. And before you answer that, you know, it seems like we're putting a lot more effort into this MPT than we have in any other MPTs that I've been sitting at this table about. And it just kind of concerned me a little bit. I understand there's a lot of concern for the reasons that Pat and Chris both said, but my God, is that five meetings? I might want to complain, but it seems like it's a lot. If you could answer that, if it's going to work for them?
The direction for the timeline really has come from the mayor and the city manager, and perhaps you want to speak to that?
I'd be happy to talk a little bit about that. My understanding is, is that from the developer's standpoint, that they need to consummate their deals as we move into mid-May. And they can correct that if it's different than that. So what I have been working towards all along is to ensure that the council is able to make a decision towards the end of April or 1st of May. And so we want to build enough process into that. Part of what we have heard from the community is wanting an opportunity, because it is a big project. It is something that feels a little bit different for us, in that we just want to have enough time for people to have their questions answered, so we come back with a very thoughtful recommendation based on that. And so it's set up to where, as the council moves through that, you can make your decision towards the end of April or the first part of May. And we're just trying to give you enough time to have all the information you need before you make that decision. So it is different. It's different primarily because it feels larger. It's... There's more questions that we've received from the community, and we just want to make sure there's ample time for the council to have all your questions answered. If you don't need all the way to that time, you're more than, of course, can choose to act sooner than that. But we want to make sure we give you the opportunity to have enough information.
Thank you for that, city manager. And I know that we need to give ample time for the public hearing on the MPT and on the alley vacation, so... But it just seems like it's just over a little bit more than what we've done. And, you know, all along, this is exactly what we wanted, you know, for the downtown. We want this kind of critical mass of folks down there. And, you know, like what my peers have already said, that's why it seems like it's just a little bit overkill. I mean, after this project is done with, I think it would be worth our time as a council to reevaluate what else... What else? Do we want any more of these types of, you know, buildings going up in the downtown? And maybe that's when we should, you know, embark on a conversation about... Have... Is downtown at its capacity? Are we saturated? Because I... It just seems to me like... I don't think we're changing the rules, but it just seems like there's a little bit more process than what we've done on other MPTs.
Alan?
Yeah, I think that's a good comment. Do we have an idea what the MPT is a year? Law Park.
Actually, the number's still being worked on. There's a range of numbers being thrown around between 900,000 and 1.6 in annual tax exemption. Actually, the thing is closer to the bottom of that range, and it depends on how it comes onto the tax rolls. So that analysis is still underway. When the MPT comes back to you, we'll have that information.
Right. So relatively speaking, it's three to four times our entire MPT program so far that we're paying. So this is a big deal in terms of that amount of money. And, you know, Chris mentioned the fear around 2,000 or, you know, 1,200 students being in one place, young people being in one place. And I think the way to deal with that, from my experiences in representing the areas around Ward 3 and living there, is the onsite management. And while I believe that Capstone is a good management company, and I like their code of conduct and their accountability rules, and maybe you can speak to that, and I like the open space and communal space that they're providing for the young people to gather. My question is about onsite management being a long-term part of this, and how do we ensure that? One of the ideas that came out of the work that we were doing in the South University Neighborhood and Fairmount Neighborhood with these big apartment complexes is that the ones that do have onsite management do really well and are good community partners, and the ones that don't are the problem ones. And so in this case, there are going to have onsite management. But how do we ensure that 10, 15 years from now, if Capstone were to sell this property or the owners were to sell it and have another management that we... Company, that we would ensure that that kind of management would be there? And one of the ideas is to put it in the code that says, over a certain number of units, onsite management is required. And that's been an idea that's floating around. So I'd like to respond to that. And then the... I do like... One of the other concerns I have or interests I have is making this as sustainable as possible. I think this is going to be here for a long time. Are they proposing to have this be a LEED-certified building, and at what level?
I'll start with that. They are proposing a LEED level of certification, a LEED gold level or earth advantage, which is an equivalent. And they're looking at sustainability in terms of the triple bottom line, and I know they've sent me some information on that. So that they're looking into the sustainability of the buildings, the way this impacts our economy, and also the way this touches on social equity. Speaking specifically about environmental sustainability, they're also looking into share cars and electric vehicle charging stations.
The developer, I think they mentioned LEED silver is where they're...
Did you say LEED silver?
Okay. Thank you.
Or equivalent to earth advantage.
Earth advantage silver. Right. Right. I'll just challenge you. The city has a policy of having LEED gold buildings, so does the state.
Well, it is a... The challenges with a residential building are different than with a commercial building, and...
building, and our buildings, although they're government offices, are essentially commercial buildings.
And what about bike parking?
Bike parking is required by code, and the developers indicated that bike parking would be, not only meet the code, but exceed the code.
And then, so, obviously, parking is a big issue for cars, and we, we have this dilemma of current practice, of how students deal with cars, and how many they bring, versus what we want to promote for future behaviors and practice around that, and, and my experience is, is that the students do bring cars, they bring them in a high amount. They don't use them a lot, and they use them as basically on weekends and other times, but they still bring them, and if we don't have adequate parking for these students, what happens? And we saw it in the West Eugene Street Neighborhood, they drive around the neighborhood looking for that last parking lot, annoying everybody, trying, and wasting gas, and, and polluting the environment, and creating greenhouse gases, and, and that, because we didn't provide for adequate parking, which is why we changed the overlay zone in the Sona Neighborhood in that area, in the MyCap, to increase the parking, so I, I, I think that that's an important part of where we need to be with this. I'll need a round two now.
Okay, George.
Thanks, I've got a list of questions, I'll start with that, and then, I want a second round.
Okay. All right, absolutely. I thought I knew that one, so I'm wrong.
All right, I'm, I'm looking over the Mupti application itself, and, let's see, the first page of the pro forma, well, first of all, I've been hearing that nobody's paying any taxes on the property now, but then, you know, on the third page of the Mupti application, page three, it says, the site is the nation's current property tax is four thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven. Most of the site is owned by nonprofits, so is that, like, on the retail, there's retail things on that site, is that, is that what the taxes are being paid?
Could very well be, we'll have to bring you back more detail on that. There are two properties, there, in addition to the Peace Health property, there is one small building that's actually vacant at the present, and the optical shop, so we'll have to really refine that information when we come back to talk about Mupti.
Okay, and, and, you know, really, that's the total tax that's paid to the county assessor. Eugene's share would be about sixteen hundred, roughly a third of any, so, that's my understanding, there's, are some taxes being paid on the property, and then we go over to the pro forma first page.
It's vacant now, though.
And you see that with the Mupti, the full property with eight hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars in taxes, roughly, roughly a third of that would go to Eugene, that would be fifty thousand dollars, definitely, the city could get for ten, every year for ten years, until the Mupti went away. Okay, I think it, you know, not today, I don't expect answers today, but I think we really need to know what the U of O's enrollment projections are, because we learned about ten days ago at the JEO meeting about the LCC stuff, they're, they're going to flatline. They bought, they had a big spike once the recession started, and then everybody that lost their jobs is already at line for the U of O, and so they're expecting a one percent a year, so it's basically a very slow flatline. I'm wondering what the U of O's, I haven't spoken to as a provost of registration yet, housing, and, and that, of course, affects, you know, what their housing projections are going to be, and I'm wondering what the current student housing vacancy rate is. I haven't spoken to knowledgeable researchers about that yet, but I think we need to know that, and I think it'd be useful if we knew how many units, beds of housing, student housing are still under construction, some of which we've granted Muptis for, the last one was a pretty good-sized project, so I'm just wondering, you know, when we can get all the information, and then we go, aha, and this matches with the U of O enrollment projections, we'd, we'd just have more pieces of the puzzle, you know, will be filled in. And I'm wondering, I didn't see on the pro forma or in the application any mention of forgiveness of SDCs, Systems Development charges, that's not contemplated, usually not part of Mupti anyway.
George, next one.
Oh, yes, please, one more.
Okay, I'm gonna make a few comments here. George, I don't know if you read it or not, I think I sent everybody a copy of Mike Eister's market study, materials for student housing.
I don't think I saw it.
In an email?
Yeah, but I'll, I've got that.
Okay, that'll be useful, thank you.
Uh-huh, so even my, when I'm thinking about this, I'm thinking that even if there's no more students than there are now, there's students will be, there are many, many students in a whole assortment of housing right now, some good, some bad, some indifferent, and many without any oversight at all, so you can kind of think of this in, to that degree, as if you are dealing with the same number of students, but you're housing them in a different place with better oversight, you might find, I think, as the chief indicated in some of his things, that you might find that you're, it's easier to, to try to maintain that behavior that we're looking for in the community, so that's just one piece to think about. The one that we will never agree on probably is, is the tax thing, because, you know, it's sort of like there's no money unless you build, and so, and you build because you get a tax break, and so it's that, we have that, we have that circular discussion on.
That's twenty-two.
On a, on a regular basis, it's all kind of based on our individual philosophies about that. My real request, and of course, it's only mine unless you share it, but I've talked to the city manager about having maybe a teleconference with a community that's actually has one of these developments in it, where you really get to, based, have a work session, not like a, I mean, a, or shop, and you just get to ask every question that you'd like to ask, and get all the information that you want to ask in kind of a free-flowing way, you don't have to get on a plane, you don't have to take a big expensive trip, you can just do it by communicating with people from other, from one of those other communities, so if you're interested in having that opportunity, so you can really dig in and ask those questions, that, that might be, I'm just sort of, put that out there as a thought, see what you think about it. And then my only other statement is that I, in addition to everything that Andrea and everyone else has said about our goals, I, I, I kind of feel a commitment, a, that I really have to be part of trying to urbanize our community. I think the, if we don't urbanize it, we're talking sprawl, we're talking carbon emissions, we're talking less livability, we're talking a lot of things, and so it's a, it's a big shift for our community to grow up, but I think I, it's, I feel sort of an imperative for, for us to take on that responsibility, and that makes people uncomfortable, because change is hard, but this is where we've said we want to go. Round two, Alan.
Answer my questions about the long-term viability of the management and code, and, and I like the code of conduct, accountability provisions, but they're not permanent. How do we make those things and make the management part of it permanent? That's a big concern of mine.
Do you have a response to that?
We've talked so much about this issue, but really, I feel that the, perhaps the developer could speak to the management, would you be comfortable with having the developer answer that, or do you want, are you looking for a staff answer?
It's up to, is it okay for the?
I mean, part of what we can do is get back in touch. What I heard you ask about was codifying some of those kinds of things, and, so I wouldn't be comfortable just talking about a codification of that, why, I'm not sure what we can and cannot do, and so that's part of what we'd want to talk about with the legal piece. As far as the actual management itself, we can provide some information, and we'd be happy to get back and provide a little bit more if we're able to.
Okay.
Given the seriousness of this discussion, if you're interested in that conversation with another community, that's fine, or if you want to set up more of a work session with the developers to get questions answered, then we can set that up, we just don't want to sort of walk over the top of the way we usually run our meetings.
Right, right.
So let me know what you want, and we'll try to.
I've actually met with the developers, and they're, that's what they do, so having it be in the code to do what they're, what they're already planning to do, it wasn't a major problem for them. You know, I, I look at this, and I see twelve hundred students here, plus the LCC students, plus the new people that would go into Mr. Masters', Master's Taco Time, plus the eight-fifty-eight old Pollock Works Building, and all of a sudden, you get like two thousand people downtown, like that almost, and, and, you know, one of the big benefits of that is that, you got, we've been talking about eyes on the street, and eyes on, on the plazas and things like that, all of a sudden, you have that many more people with eyes, which creates public safety, and I think that will have a dramatic impact on, on what happens downtown, as well as the stuff that Pat was talking about, which is the new investment that it brings in, that will follow the two thousand people, and we do get the fifty thousand dollars of property tax a year. I, I'm just really happy that there won't be any garbage cans that students don't have, that won't bring in off the street, and that the public path gets straightened out, and the other benefit that I've been thinking about in terms of my neck of the woods, is that this relieves a lot of pressure off that area for the redevelopment that is happening, not just the, but what they're going and doing in the South University of Fairmont Neighborhood is going in and scraping off and combining lots, and scraping off old houses, and building really high-density right next to or in single-family neighborhoods, and that is destroying parts of the neighborhoods, and, and changing their character dramatically, and impacting people's quality of life. Having this development, I think, will relieve a lot of that pressure in that part of town.
So I've got George Brown, Pat, George Polling, and Andrea. George Brown.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Well, I, you know, this project is so huge, this is a different Mupti than all the other Muptis that we've ever talked about, and it deserves as many meetings as we need, as we can schedule to get it right, to get all the information that we need. The city's being asked to participate to the ten to sixteen million dollars, we should spend as much time as possible, and it may be that we won't be able to sign one of these meetings, but that, that would be okay too, but we need to hear from all the stakeholders, and, including the police.
They're calling right now.
Well, I just, I want to make a presentation, and I want to just tell you about some of the research I did. I, the first, I was probably the first person on council to hear about this, because on January twenty-fifth, I was invited to go to the Downtown Neighbors Meeting, I was going to go anyway, but they invited me to go, and take off my counselor hat, and speak as a downtown businessman, I said, yeah, sure, I'd be happy to do that. Well, it wasn't on the agenda, but I get to the meeting, and Steve Master and Conrad Sicker there presenting this perspective, and, it's kind of like the one in the Mupti application, I'd just like to point something out, it says here, University of Oregon, off-campus urban student housing, Eugene Ring, with the U of O official logo on your name. This implies that it's deceptive, it implies that this is an official partnership with the University of Oregon, that's the way the Downtown Neighbors took it. It is not, it's an off-campus, there's no connection of financial or any other way with the University of Oregon, and then, so they modified it a little bit for the Mupti application itself, they don't call it U of O student housing anymore, but they have the City of Eugene logo, and, and the U of O logo, which instead of airbrushing out, they just pan, went like this with the pen, amended it that way, so, I think that's kind of a bad presentation, really. So the concern at that meeting, after the developers left the room, naturally, we didn't talk about downtown business development, we talked about, wow, is this a done deal? Mr. Master told them that it was a done deal, they asked him point blank, then they asked me, and people were nervous, because it's passing, you know, the residents, and I said, no, it's not a done deal, I'm sure they'll ask for tax exemption, and the city council will get to weigh in on that, it's not a done deal, so, but this has been the concern, and I've had people come up to me at work, I went to the meeting yesterday, I was sponsored by the city club, and the Downtown Neighbors, by the way, not, not officially by the city, but that's pretty interesting, and that was a concern, was what we've been talking about, management, long-term management, we'll need another round to address that.
Pat?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I, the first time I heard about this project, it, it kind of excited me, because of the points that I made earlier regarding our goals, and the more I hear Council Zelenka, Council Pryor, Council Ortiz speak about it, the more, it actually makes me a little more excited, because it seems that we have a lot of approval, a lot of, a lot of momentum behind this, so certainly, there are going to be a ton of questions, many that I've heard already, and, and many more are going to come up as we go through the process, through the five meetings, or four meetings, or seven, or as Council Brown says, as many meetings as we need, to make sure that, that people are satisfied that we're doing the right thing. So the questions are going to come, and I'm not going to, once again, belabor them here, but another, one, something that Council Ortiz pointed out, that made me think of, think of a, the timeline on this, regarding, you know, when you build an apartment, then it fills up as people, as people rent the, rent the apartments, it seems a bit different with student housing, it seems a little bit more cyclical on an annual basis, where students come at a certain time. Can you talk about timeline on this a little bit? Is it, how it is cyclical with a particular school year, perhaps, and, and how that affects the decision-making that we have to make as a council?
We have tried to take what the developer has told us into account in terms of setting the timeline, it's important to the developer that they begin construction in June, because they are trying to rent out the units for September of thirteen, and if they miss that time, students will go to different units, and they've effectively missed a whole year of leasing out those properties. That's what, that's why the timeline is so critical to the developer.
So there's a year of actual occupancy that we're looking at here. The other question that I have is regarding the fact that this is Eugene Hospital and Clinic, and then Peace Health Sacred Heart, it's been a hospital for a lot of years, seems to me there's going to be a lot of preparation, ground prep, digging deep holes, and refilling them, is that, can you talk about that a little bit?
We know for a fact that this building has asbestos, it was on the steam line, it likely other has, also has other contaminated materials, so we know that taking down this building will be expensive and time-consuming. The other issues will likely be infrastructure issues, because the site was not developed for housing, is not, infrastructure is available to the site, but not yet on the site, so we anticipate costs and time involved in readying the site for this new use.
So it's going to be expensive, no, no matter whomever, at what point in time develops this particular property, it's going to be expensive to, to mitigate the asbestos and other in-ground tanks, whatever may happen to be underneath the, the former hospital, so, and that's all taken into account, as far as the, the developer's concerned, they're paying these costs, and that's a part of the expense of building the building, that's, okay, thank you.
George Polling?
Well, I'd like to agree with Andrea about the number of meetings that we're having in reference to this project, but I, I'm glad to see them, because the, the size of this project, and the amount of people that it affects, and the amount of properties that it affects, I think it warrants that little extra scrutiny than what we've done in the past with some of this much, much smaller Mupti applications throughout the university area, so I'm, I'm glad that we're, we're taking, taking time to look at this. I'm looking, you know, like, like Pat said, there are going to be many, many questions, not only from the, the open houses and the, in the public hearing, so I'm looking forward to the answers to the questions, not so much as the questions, so, I'm not really going to get too involved with that, and I'm glad that, Mayor, that you've encouraged the city manager to try to set up some teleconference or something. I, I brought that up from the very start, that there's got to be some way that, that we can go to another community that already has one of these established, without spending a lot of money flying there, or flying the council officers, or, or somebody, or, or if one of these communities that are a little bit better off more financially than we are, maybe they'd like to come out for a visit, and we could do it that way, but I'm, I'm, I think that's a great way to find out, is have a face-to-face meeting with one of these other cities that has had this experience, and whether it be face-to-face via a teleconference, or, or they want to come out for a vacation and play a little golf on the coast, or whatever, that'd be fine.
You could get a package.
Yeah, I'm, I'm really glad to see the early-on conversations, and I, I, you know, by, by the developers, and I think this definitely needs to be a two-way conversation, not only are they putting that information out there, but they're listening to the concerns, and they're, and that they address the concerns early on, in order for them to make this work. And I do have one, one question, although, you know, this is being touted as university housing, there is no restriction on who can, who can rent, rent one of these types of developments, I'd like to know what the past experience is. I'd like to know what the past experience is with other communities, with other projects like this, during the downtime, when schools and universities nearby are not in session. What is the occupancy rate? What happens to it? Does it stay constant? Is a different type of a person coming in, or what? Just, just to kind of get an idea of what happens with these, these big projects when, when the universities are shut down.
Andrea?
Well, I'm glad everybody else wants to meet for all those meetings. No disrespect, Matt, seriously, I mean, if, I don't have any questions. Of course, this isn't in my ward, I would love to have this problem in the train salon in Whittaker, Westside Eugene, come on down, we'll find you a place. So I just wanted to make a couple comments. As far as the students, you know, I, I'm just taking, I just take a little exception to the fact that we're, it almost feels like we're profiling the students that are going to be coming into our community, and it kind of bugs me. There's a lot of students, different shapes, age, colors, backgrounds, you know, not all of them are, you know, running around with kegs of beer in the back of their trucks, you know, screaming as they go down the road. Maybe they are, I don't know, Alan, you live over there.
They are. I'll take you out on Friday night, Andrea.
You can go over to my side of town, that's what happens over there, that's where all the police are, on my side of town. So, you know, I just have to say that that kind of bugs me. It also, as far as the MUPD application goes, you know, I'm, I feel like I'm a proponent for the MUPDs here, and I can't say that I really am, but, you know, when I look at the rules that we set up for people to apply to when we encourage this kind of business growth and development, I don't think I ever saw that we, that there's anything too big. You know, there is stuff on the other side that it's too small, it has to be over five units, is that correct? So, I don't know, it, it just, it seems like, you know, we're open for business, or we're not. So I'll just leave it at that.
Okay. I've got George Brown, Alan, and Pat, round three. George Brown.
Thank you. Okay, well, you know, the city council does have final say over the MUPDs, I mean, thank goodness we do, otherwise, we wouldn't need the city council to land, they could just go down to planning and development and go, "Mayor, man, you got to be, I mean, that's why we get to examine each case." So, so I think that's a good thing. I think it's a necessary thing. This one's a heck of a lot of money. So, I went to the meeting yesterday at Cosmic Pizza, and the concerns I heard there were pretty much what I've been hearing almost every day or reading on emails. I would say most were not adamantly opposed to the project, but they have very serious concerns about the management and, and long-term. So I thought, well, what better place to start than Capstone's, and your active map, that shows all the states. When you click on a state, and it lists, there's two columns, on the left-hand column, on-campus sites, projects that they're involved with, some of which they didn't build, I think they bought from other, a previous developer, and then remodeled them, and made them nicer. And they, and they do have relationships with the universities that are on campus. Now, the right-hand column, off-campus sites. So I started clicking around, and kept clicking, and back and forth, and sideways, and up and down, and I noticed certain patterns. I'd like to share a couple of those patterns that I saw with you. Any of the off-campus projects, like, let's just take Texas, for instance, there were four off-campus projects listed, but three of them have already been sold to other developers. The fourth one isn't set to open until next fall. So while the list looks, you know, wow, how many of these projects in Texas? Three of them aren't part of history, they're not, they're not Capstone products anymore, and one is not yet on the list. And I thought, hmm, okay, so it's that way in every state. That way in every state. Florida, you'll see that there's several that are no longer, they're listed on the list, but they've been sold to other people. Some in as short a time period as two and a half years, like the project in Kelly Station, Texas, that's Texas A&amp;M. It was, initial occupancy was 2009, they listed it sold to other, they sold it. So, you know, Capstone could complete this project, and they could sell it in less than 10 years, so it's, it's fairly common, actually. They tend to keep the ones that are on campus, in almost every state, that's true. For instance, if you click on Oregon, you'll see University Commons, Oregon, sold to other. That's their only project.
George, I'll get you another round here.
I need one more.
Okay, if I can. All right, Alan?
Andrea, I, when I talk about, they talk about these in terms of students, so that's the language I've been using, when I talk about it in terms of my name, I talk about it in terms of youth, because they're not all students, they're not all going to U of O, and they're all going, but it is, that, that cohort presents a challenge to a lot of neighborhood friends of mine, and I'll pass on some of the emails and the constant barrage, and there's a reason there's a party patrol, and it's just around the University of Oregon, and the whole cadre of police associated with that. George, I had the same issues around what Capstone is and how they operate. I know they have 30,000 around campuses and 10,000 units off-campus, about 40,000 across country in 30-something odd states. And really, what it gets down to is they own some of them, and they don't, they don't own most of them, and they're really a management company, and they're likely to sell it, which prompted me to want to inquire about how do we make sure that the management, and onsite management, and those kind of rules stay permanent regardless of how, who owns this thing, and, and 10 years from now, if they sold it, that all that goes away, and it becomes a big problem for us. And, and I did notice on the thing that they gave me last week ago or so, there's no U of O on here at all, they did get admonished by the U of O for doing that. So I would like to see the codes, look at a code on this project regarding to management and onsite, whether or not a car share is a good idea, and around, around parking. You know, one of the things about the park net learned is that you can't just, it's not sufficient, if, if you don't have adequate parking, what happens is, is those cars spill out into the neighborhoods, and, and that requires that the neighborhoods around, in my ward, that they have parking zones. And we have parking zones all over that area, and people love and they hate parking zones. And, and they come with a cost, so, because you have to pay for those permits for the enforcement of them. So if, for those folks that want to have less parking, they need to come up with a, with the counter to, how do we deal with the people that are wanting to park their cars in the neighborhood, and the impact on the livability of the people in the surrounding neighborhoods, and how does that, and so you're asking those people to spend 40 bucks a year more for a parking permit, or 80 bucks if you have two cars, and, and the impacts on their ability to have good quality of life in an area that they've come accustomed to. So maybe one way around that is that they have the adequate parking, but when they build it, they make it so that it's convertible later. 10, 15 years from now, cars, you know, at $7 a gallon, it might not be the best use of space, so if that space were to be able to convert it into some alternative use down the road, some of the lower levels of it, maybe that's a, an interesting way to recoup some of that investment later.
Thank you. Pat, you're next.
Well, I'm glad they were admonished by the U of O. I was admonished once by the U of O when I was a freshman, and-
Where were you living?
Living, living in Bean when it was brand new, and it was, the speakers on the inside, but I was admonished, certainly. Regarding the project, you know, this is a kind of a legacy project for us, in that it's going to be around, clearly, for a lot of years, and when people in the future come to Eugene, it's going to be one of the first things that they see in downtown Eugene, is this project. And I'm looking at the pictures, it looks like it's going to be a very attractive part of downtown Eugene. And in that it's a legacy project, you know, I'm in my 10th year on the council right now, and I've not seen fit to travel to, for, on council business out of town, but I think that on this particular project, this is one that, actually seeing it in person for a council or two councils going down there and actually seeing and hearing what is said about the project, you can get a lot more than, than a virtual tour. So if, you know, if that's possible for one or two councils to go down there and take a look, or one or two staff members, whatever it may be, to actually get some on-the-ground feedback on how the Tempe, Arizona State project is working in particular, since it is a very similar, Tempe's a similar-sized town, even though it's engulfed by Phoenix and Scottsdale and others. But see how, see how it really is working on the ground down there, so. In that it's a legacy, I think it's something that it may, we may find some things out that you can't find out from a virtual tour or from a teleconference.
Yeah, my only thought about, that aside from the expense, is kind of my learning here at the council table is that we don't always look at everything the same way, nor use the sort of same filter for the information that we get. So I honestly don't have confidence that a couple of us could go and bring adequate information back for all of us, so I, I, that's what I was looking for, because I could foresee a table that had everybody from your police chief, to your, to the neighborhood association, to the, the residents, to the city officials, to just a robust group of people, you got to talk about what that experience has been like, what's the positives and negatives, you could probe as much as you wanted to probe. I'm going to just make one more comment, I will turn it back to George. I just, what I hope we're going to do here, and I know it's hard, but I'm hoping that we'll be looking as a community for what it is, what it would take for this to be a good project for us all. And because I, I think that way you can go after the things that will make it work for, for all of us, as opposed to living in a zone of, of fear about what, what bad things it might bring. So I, I'm just hoping that we will, encouraging all of us as a community to really look at, what would it take to make you feel that this is a really good project for our community and our downtown? George?
Thank you, Mayor, that's good perspective. The parking provision is actually one of the things I like about the project. And if, you know, if the students didn't use it all initially, perhaps part of it could be fenced off, and they could gape themselves in, and the general public could be able to use what the students aren't using at least initially. Anyway, I want to get back to some other patterns that I noticed when I was Googling around, and on, perhaps comes on the site, by the way. They tend to sell projects like this, they don't hang on to this type of building, this type of massing. They tend to keep, they keep all their on-campus, there's a lot of volatility in the off-campus ones. They tend to keep, they have another category of various types of buildings, and one are called cottages, and they're spread out, they're like, well, it's a two-story house, and they're grouped close together, small yards, but they're spread out over the neighborhood, it's like a suburban pattern. And those they keep, they're generally quite a bit more expensive, there's a lot more amenities, they hang on to those. They get rid of the ones like they used to own, and I think that this will be a fall in that same category, personally, just based on, on the evidence from their own website. So, you know, assuming that there's good management along the home run, what happens after they're sold? Well, you can go to the ones that they've sold, and then you can find rating systems of residents who have lived in them after they were sold, and a pattern is starting to emerge, I, you know, wasn't able to fully research it, but satisfaction generally goes down pretty steeply, and to the point where there's like, you know, slightly under half of the residents recommending that people don't move in there. So, because, you know, when they sell it, they don't usually keep the management, so that's the owner's responsibility, as far as I'm concerned. I'd like to hear, I mean, if I'm wrong about that, I'd like to hear that too, I want to, I want to get all the facts. But I'm just saying, these are some patterns that I noticed from a quick two-hour search on one Capstone site last night. And there's probably a way to make this a good long-term project, that would be everyone's ideal, I think, but then I have some very, very serious questions about the MUPD. I guess that's about it.
Alan?
Along those same lines of, it's not just Capstone, but as any project gets older, I think some of those things happen, some kind of, you know, how far out of the norm are they would be the question I had, and what can we do to make sure that that property that stays a valuable piece of property that people are attracted to? I'd like to have that phrase in that way. And then, the other quick question for staff, come back with some information on, is, is the local contractors that would be involved in the project, I know Steve Masters is involved as a developer, but what are the local, local jobs, what are the commitment of, of them to use local contractors and local businesses, and how many jobs that would create? Because it's 89, we're all project to hold on basis, right? So 45, or something like that.
So we're going to thank everybody for being here, thank you for being here, and we're going to call this meeting to an end, and we'll get, we'll get more, more information. I appreciate the probing questions and the real consideration everybody is going to give to this. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on, Matt.